For June, and the first two items on our agenda are public hearings. The first public hearing is for the Banks Schmucker subdivision. This is a subdivision of 10 acres from a larger parcel that will be used for residential development.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to speak to this subdivision application?
Bob, do you have a second on that motion?
Al, one second. Those in favor say aye. Any votes? Thank you. Now, does anybody have a comment they'd like to make about the subdivision? I will ask again, does anybody wish to make a comment about the Banks Schmucker subdivision of 10 acres? Hearing none, we would accept the motion to close the public hearing. We'll give it to Al and Hank seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Any votes? So moved. The next public hearing concerns the subdivision site plan application by Loves for Travel Center on State Route 4414, just south of the New York State thruway exit. We have a motion to open that public hearing. Hank Bickel move, and Karen Thompson second. Those in favor say aye. Any votes? All right, the public hearing is now open. At this point, you may want to make your presentation as part of the public hearing, and then we'll very shortly be going into the discussion of the actual application. So if more is yours, you can state your name when you come forward.
I think it's best if I stand back here so I don't get in the way of the camera, but if anybody can't hear me, please raise your hand. I don't try to speak up and clear. My name is...
You have the... You have the special microphone.
Thanks, Craig.
Does anybody mind if I take my face mask off while I discuss, since I'm farther away?
That's fine.
Great, thank you.
We're an option.
Yeah. Thank you all. So my name is Tim Frytag with Bowler Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant Loves Travel Centers and Country Stores. Along with me tonight is Mr. David Everett, acting as land use counsel for the project. We're excited to be back to continue the discussion and coordination with the town planning board for the redevelopment of a currently vacant parcel at the intersection of New York State Route 414 and the exit 41 High Interstate offering. For the benefit of the public who may be coming in, this site location is across from Petrol and just south of the Delago Casino. The town is relatively familiar with the project thus far. It was, Craig, maybe a year ago, June, we sat down to kick off some preliminary discussions about the project. It's pretty great to see what we've accomplished over the past year for this development opportunity. At the end of 2019, we attended a joint town board and planning board meeting to introduce Loves to the town. We've been coordinating with the town extensively over the past few months. We've gotten a series of town comments, both from the town review engineers, land use council, and town staff. We were before the planning board in February, where we presented some preliminary site plan and architectural elevations. We answered some questions and comments, and we're given some good, clear direction on how to move forward with full plan development. Since then, I believe in April, we've submitted a whole slew of information, thousand-plus-page reports and site plans and full SWIP documents to support the development opportunity here in the town of Clay. The town has had the opportunity to review that material and deemed our application complete for site plan review and subdivision at the April planning board meeting. Since then, the materials were circulated for seeker review. We attended the Seneca County Planning Board meeting, where we were granted recommendation for site plan and subdivision approval. They did have one condition, that coordination with New York State DOT forego and get concept approval for our access drive. We've been working with New York State DOT for maybe six months now to permit this project. SRF Associates is a local traffic engineer who Loves has hired to do the traffic report for the project. That has been since, or has since been submitted to New York State DOT for review. We got some preliminary feedback from DOT that they are in support of a traffic signal at our shared access drive with Route 414. They agree with the Town Master Corridor guidelines that this traffic signal supports not only our site, but future development growth to the south and the west of the Loves property. So the full buildout for this traffic signal and shared access road is going to support future expansion and be set up in a way that could be expanded in the future. Loves is proposing to utilize this drive through shared access rights to the owners of the property, since it will be off the Loves tax parcel property. It will be set up in the future, should that future development in this corridor come along, it could be turned over to the town as a town road. It'll be built to town spec to make sure that that could happen in the future if the neighboring development supports that. Since the Seneca County Planning Board meeting, we've received another round of engineering comments for the project. We just recently, as of yesterday, resubmitted a response to those outstanding engineering comments. The board should have or should be receiving a copy of those responses shortly. I'm sure nobody's gone through all of them yet, but you should have the opportunity to review. I could certainly answer any specific questions the board might have tonight, but it also gives you adequate time to review those responses for our July meeting. Some comments that I'd like to just discuss briefly, I won't go through them all. We've got, I think, three rounds of comments that we can discuss, and we can go around the room and ask any questions during this discussion period of the project. But just high level, the site plan has been revised to accommodate some landscaping concerns. We are positioning trees around the entire frontage and the perimeter of the property in compliance with the Master Corridor guidelines. We're exceeding the 30% minimum green space requirements excluding stormwater management areas. Those were previous discussions that we cleaned up with town staff and review engineer. It was commented for internal parking lot landscaped islands should be provided where feasible. It's a recommendation in the zoning code that the ends of parking stalls should be curved with landscape improvements. We have... We have provided that here on the site plan, kind of where we've got our drive-through activities. We've got a landscaped island there. Elsewhere on site, the type of use here for the volume of truck traffic and vehicle traffic in and out of these parking facilities, as well as the east or western part of the project with truck traffic, it's very restrictive on what we can do there for landscaping in these islands. You've got truck drags, trailer drags that really tear these apart. Loves is really, really proud of the way their sites look, not only when they open, but year after year after year. And they don't want to have to keep replacing curb that's broken up, or replacing trees that might have been run over by vehicles. So they're accommodating those landscape islands where they can, and just through their experience of hundreds of other stores across the country, it's best that some areas be striped for that excess maneuvering of vehicles. There were a few stormwater technical comments that were addressed in the LaBella's review engineering comments. We're still proceeding with some stormwater areas out in the northeast corner, and eventually back to the west of the sites. No issues with the provided comments that we saw. We've got truck entrances back beyond on the western side of the property. Out front is for passenger vehicle fueling. Out in the west is for the truck fueling. It was commented on that this entrance appears to be excessively large, and it was asked if we could narrow that down. Based on the layout here, we do have our diesel dispensers situated on the site that really need that wide access drive opening for trucks to maneuver into these appropriate fueling dispenser areas. It's a unique site configuration, and we were really limited on where this setup would actually fit on-site. It is important to separate the passenger vehicles from the truck vehicles for safety of the guests. I do want to note that...
Tim?
Yes?
Could you hold the mic up a little bit closer? Maybe use an elbow or something when you have to point?
I'm using it as a pointer, aren't I? I do want to point out that for this truck access, the majority of truck traffic is going to be coming from exit 41, taking a right out to the shared access drive and a right into the site. We don't expect them to be crossing vehicle traffic as a left turn lane, so it's really an isolated right turn lane for the majority of that truck traffic entering. So we don't foresee a safety concern with the wide access drive. We had some architectural updates to the plans. It was requested that we review the master corridor guidelines for some characteristics of building enhancement treatments for this corridor. We were able to update some building elevations that I'll show here. These elevations have been updated to provide variations in massing of the building. The large building facade has been broken up from with column, vertical elements, variations in roof lines. We've updated to use natural color schemes across the facility with matching color schemes around the front and the back of the building. We've got cultural stone included with natural tones in those column elements to really enhance those aesthetics, and provide windows to break up those large basades. We've included additional window areas on those walls that may have mechanicals within the walls that don't allow real windows, but we can put some faded windows up to really help break up the brick siding. I mentioned the update on New York State DOT. The town is working on some code adjustments to accommodate, or to grant the planning board authority to waive a couple of zoning concerns for this project. I'll revert back to the site plan in here. There is a note in the code with some concern about parking in the front yard and some signage requirements. Mr. Blair could speak on this more, but the town is working together to grant the planning board some waiver authorities for parking in the front yard and signage. It's been flagged that we do need a couple of variances for this layout. We'll need a variance for the canopy in the front yard. This fueling canopy is set back approximately 62 feet from the road. The building setback is 80 feet, so based on the definitions in the town code, it is perceived as a structure, and we'll abide to that 80-foot front yard setback. We'll need a variance for illuminated signs. And another discussion piece for tonight is the propane tanks in the front yard. It was flagged early on, I think it was a discussion of this board, about having those propane tanks up in the front yard. Those are still shown in the front yard. The applicant is working with the Loves program to see if we can relocate those propane tanks. We think we do have a resolution for that. We think we can accommodate from here in this striped island off the end of the parking facility. We bring it up tonight as a discussion item, and to see if the planning board would think that that would be a better location versus up here along the front yard, along New York State Route 414. So those are the high-level comments that we've addressed. Oh, one other item was previously, there was a high-rise sign located up here in the southeast corner of the property. This has some restriction, setback restrictions from I-90 and thruway boundaries, since we're off an exit map. The county, or the state, for I-90, actually goes right away up to here. So we have a 660-foot setback from the right-of-way here for highway signage, and further restricts what's allowed within that area. So that sign has been relocated here, up to the southwest of the site. The proposed subdivision map has been updated to accommodate some additional land here for Loves to position that high-rise sign off the back. A full signage package was submitted to the town planning board in, I believe, the April full submission, and I just wanted to bring that up to show the relocation for that sign. So those are the high-level comment updates that we've made to the plans. We'd be here for a while if I ran through all of the comments, but we can certainly do a round the horn here and bring up any questions or comments that the board may have. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you.
Just one point of clarification with respect to the illuminated signs. As you folks know, your code requires a special use permit for those types of signs, so we will be filing a new application for that, probably within the next, hopefully, week or so, to give you enough time to take a look at that before your, you know, your next meeting.
Good. Tim, a question for you, since you have the site plan up there. Your last topic was the high-rise sign. Is that off of the access road, or... The reason I'm asking is that there was some earlier discussion concerning the development of the whole parcel, the whole parcel being said to be a partial, that that access road would continue to the west. Does the high-rise sign interfere if the road was to continue to the west?
No, so we have to further position that sign south of that drive to allow a continuation of that access road if the future code supports it.
Thank you. I would then ask, is there anyone else who wishes to make comment about the Loves Travel Center subdivision and site plan? Once again, any...
I have a quick clarification as well, Bob. The, Mr. Freitag had mentioned that the town is considering an amendment of a portion of the zoning code. Just want to clarify for the record, the town board and the planning board have examined the zoning code as it relates to the C-1 district and properties abutting the thruway, and particularly that these properties tend to have very unique signage and parking demands, requirements, et cetera, and they have different components of the boards have come together and asked me to assist me some language to update the zoning code. That is for all the properties in the C-1 district that abut the thruway, which is at least four to my knowledge, if not more. So I just wanted to put that on the record for posterity purposes.
And given those amendments, they provide the ability for us to seek a waiver from the planning board for certain requirements relating to signage and parking.
Yes.
And so we will be submitting a request for those waivers, hopefully soon as well, within the next week or so, again, to give you enough time to look at that before your next meeting.
We understand, yes. Thank you, Mr. Everett. Okay, I'll ask once again, does anybody else wish to make comment? Since the open period for response to the seeker is still open and won't be closed until a little bit later in the month?
Is that, you're referring to the involved agencies?
Yes.
That's long passed.
That is passed.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, we are, yeah, we're solid with any responses. I think we did just get a couple responses, and they were not objecting to the planning board taking lead agency steps.
Okay, well, now, a plan B, since things haven't been fully resolved at this point, I think the recommendation is that we continue this public hearing until into the next month at our, at our July planning board meeting. So I would accept a motion to continue this public hearing. Somebody?
Al moved.
Okay, Al Smith has moved.
Well, seconded.
And Ken Hollenstein has seconded motion. Are we ready for the vote? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Public hearing is now continued till next month, and we are now ready to open up the June planning board meeting. All members of the planning board are present. I do not have any additional public comments, where people have requested time, so we can move on to approval of the minutes of our last meeting, that was June 8, 2020. You have received the minutes from that meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? There was one last minute change on, I think you have all received them, but there, we had listed Mr. Bruce Sherman representing 3S Gateway during the public comment period, the individual who spoke with actually Mike Ritchie, a hostage in here, I think that is in the minutes. So there's a motion to approve the June 8 minutes. Al Smith has moved. Ken Hollenstein has seconded motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? So moved. Mr. Reynolds, you're up for your important...
So last meeting, we have a couple of events to issue. Ben Tishtel is putting up a enclosed porch on our back foot road. Dan Morrell is adding a porch over on row room, and Dan Ray is putting up a small porch as well. So three porches in a row, so it's that season.
Everybody's at home, they need more space.
Yeah, old Loves and the Home Depot is picking up, that's for sure. Mike Simon, I guess we start looking to the Love project, see where we left off. There's been a lot of delays, and this coronavirus thing kind of puts us behind eight ball, but we'll get back on that here in the next week or two, just to see where we're at. Been working on some loose ends with the Loves project, Tom Blair, myself, Mike Simon, Chair and CEO, always working on some loose ends, in case between both parties, the town and the Loves folks. Sussard, as you know, is starting their project, they're just doing some grading on the property. The purpose of that is just getting ready for future developments. There's nothing concrete, just getting ready for developments in the future. So far, one script report has been filed for the project, they're required to provide script reports weekly, so they're doing it. I got one last week, Mike let me know.
Okay.
They work with Mr. Michael Smucker on West Tire Road.
Correct. They should be, they should be doing those twice a week.
Yeah, twice a week, that is over that acre requirement. They work with Mr. Smucker on West Tire Road, he's looking to refurbish mobile homes. There's a hang-ups and some, a altercation between Mr. Smucker and his office, but they're working on them diligently, worked out again yesterday and last Friday, but I think he's getting the impression that there are requirements he has to follow, and a devoc that has to be turned in to us to proceed with his home development business. And he's doing some job sites inspections as well, even though the coronavirus is here, we're out, gets fresh air and includes inspections. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Any questions for the zoning enforcement office? Okay, we can move into the whole business, and I would like to suggest flipping around the first two items, holding the Banks-Smucker subdivision until after the Loves Travel Center, simply because we can let the Loves folks leave at that point, they don't have to stay longer than this, sir. Any opposition to that?
No, sir.
Okay. You folks are agreed, I hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, greatly appreciate it.
Okay, and the first item we need to cover under that broader headline is that the motion we passed last, or originally dealing with the acceptance of the application, there was a bit of a discrepancy there, or maybe this understanding, and it was requested that we redo that resolution. Mr. Blair, would you like to lead us through that, please?
Well, this is, this is the same resolution that you adopted during the April meeting. The only changes you're going to see on this resolution are, in the, in the planning board resolutions, you'll often see when we do the initial acceptance and the, and deem the application to be complete, we'll also deem ourselves lead agency. Well, on this resolution, what the wording, Mr. Everett and I were speaking earlier, and he spotted this language, which I probably have read time and time again, and have not corrected yet. So if you look under, now therefore be it resolved, the operative paragraph to take the ticket is number four. It simply states, the planning board hereby states, "It shall serve as lead agency rather than intends to." So I think, yeah, it's a little more concrete. Really, the only change, I changed the dates and a little cleanup to sit there there. But really, it's just a resolution accepting the application, deeming it, deeming this, this board as lead agency for seeker. We've already done the notices, we won't have any, we've already received some positive feedback. And then, at the end of the resolution, you'll say that this resolution confirms and ratifies our understanding that this board initially fully intended to become lead agency, and that's all there is.
Where is that last bit?
Right here in the final whereas, page two, right above, now therefore be it resolved, it says in here that seeks to hear and clarify and ratify its designation of town planning board as leaders.
Okay, there it is, thank you.
So it's a clarification, ratification, beautification.
If I understand that right, from the town board meeting, that was not actually the full issue, that they didn't agree with it?
No, no, a whole different issue.
That's a whole different issue?
This is just pertaining to lead agency for seeker of the planning board.
Okay.
Yep, this has nothing to do with the local law.
Okay.
This is seeker for the actual site plan. The seeker in coordination with site plan, subdivision, and very soon, special permit, which we'll have to remind ourselves for the next public notice to include that as well. That's going to be an add-on to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
We can keep the mover and the seconder for this, or is this...
However you'd like to do it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, Mr. Smith and Mr. Bickle, would you want to move a second in the motion as printed here?
Yeah.
Okay. And everybody understands what we're doing and why we're doing it?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'll do the roll call. Alan Smith?
Yes.
Deborah Geary?
Yeah.
Ken Hollenstein?
Yes.
Henry Bickle?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Karen Thompson?
Yeah.
Larry Kessel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the motion is approved. Thank you. Yes, Tom, we will, we'll improve our ways.
It's always an improvement process. There we are. Always get better.
Okay. So we thought tonight we'd do some of the seeker. You don't have to do it all, but since we have some time now, let's, let's move forward. I think you have the seeker materials that were distributed. And Mr. Simon, do you want to lead us through?
Sure. Why don't you at least do an intro to get started for the seeker? And then Alex Delano is here to assist as well. Thank you, Mike Simon, and all associates. We have received the part one from the applicant, which you know is really the general information about the site. This is a coordinate review for a number of reasons. Again, the lead agency status that been brought out, sent out when there was no text to the planning board being lead agency. So with part one completed, it is then the responsibility of the lead agency complete part two and narrative part three. Under part two, there is, I've heard this before, there is a workbook that the D E C prepared several years ago, which took a lot of the ambiguity out of how we answer yes or no on a lot of these. And you can see, starting in part two, impact on land, for instance, it even gives you the reference of where to look into that workbook to verify whether or not this should be checked. Is a potential impact small, moderate, or large? So in doing this, once you check yes on that particular, impact on that particular area, you do check every single one of those regardless of whether there is a small or no impact. And what Alex has done for the board's benefit, she has highlighted in yellow why we checked the box yes to begin with. So A, the proposed action involves construction on land where depth of water table was less than three feet. They submitted a geotechnical report where some of their water tables, although not a lot of areas, was, was less than three feet. So we checked the box yes, okay? And we check no for small impact. We do not feel that it's going to be a significant impact on the project. And then going down, all of the remaining ones, and again, Alex did highlight any of those yellow, they really don't apply to this particular project or the impact on land. However, again, you are required to check the appropriate boxes throughout.
Can, can I ask if any of that area where the depth of water table was less than three feet, is that going to be covered by buildings or parking lot areas?
I don't specifically know right offhand, Dr. Seem, but the geotechnical report, what they do is they have specific recommendations if they're hitting any type of unsuitable soil for buildings, parking lots, or other areas. I would suspect that I don't know because I don't, I did read, I didn't read the report word for word, but again, I did go through it knowing that. I would suspect it's probably further to the west near the federal wetland.
Correct.
AKA ditch that runs through and where we're putting the water and facility on the western part. But that's just a guess at this point.
Mr. Fright Out, can you amplify on that?
Yeah, so where the buildings are located, the primary convenience store out front, that elevation is going to be raised by probably 10 feet from its current condition for the building. So that will enhance that separation to groundwater. And the back tire shop is being raised about five feet. So again, to provide adequate separation to that high groundwater elevation.
Okay.
So it is the board's pleasure, so once we checked yes, you would look then onto the part three narrative, and we did a write-up of why that was checked yes, and if you will, a finding on why it is not a significant impact and why it is a small or no impact. So when we do check the yes box, you will find there's corresponding information on the part three. And even if there was a no checked, for instance, on the second one, impacts on geological features, even though we didn't check yes, we explain why it was checked no, okay? Because simply there's nothing in the workbook or on the part two, which would imply that there would be a small amount of impact. But in order to be consistent with a project of this size, we wanted to make sure that we qualified why we checked no. And give credit where credit is due, the applicant, their counsel, and their engineers had done their part three with that, with that application. So we used that because they did a lot of nice work in explaining a lot of this. However, we didn't take all of what they had written. Alex took the opportunity to modify it where we thought appropriate, so that it was coming from the board more than coming from the applicant. But they did do a nice job giving us that base to start.
Okay.
At this point.
Mike, before you start, can I ask, Dr. Seem, can I ask you a question on what you're planning? I want to, I want to make sure that we're clear on what we're accomplishing tonight before Mike gets started. Is it your intent to work through the part two tonight?
Yes.
Okay. The only question I had is recently I was informed that Loves has picked up some additional real estate.
Yep.
So that that's going to be added to the subdivision parcel. And I think that there's some movement of a propane, propane tank, and there might be some other modifications that were made recently. All I want to do is make sure that the Loves folks are comfortable that beginning and working through, even if you want to get through the whole thing tonight, that the Loves group is comfortable with working through seeker at this stage tonight rather than at the next month meeting. That's all I'd like to clarify tonight.
I mean, I just, that's a great point, but knowing what I know based on the relocation of the propane tank and the possible purchase of a small piece of land.
Minor.
I don't believe it would have any impact on this, although it should be duly noted for the record, which I believe you plan on doing.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have an objection to them moving forward and having a discussion of, you know, at least a preliminary discussion about these issues. We will, you know, next month, once we make the submission on the ESUP for the sign and the waivers, we can go through any additional items. The board thinks may impact its discussion of part two at that time. But at least you would have gotten a good start on part two tonight.
Sure.
And, you know, if there's any additional comments or thoughts that you guys have and you want to talk about next month, you can do with that.
That would be, that would be.
Make sense?
So my, my recommendation to the board for this evening's meeting is to have this general discussion, and if you want to go question by question, that's fine. But we're not going to contemplate final votes tonight. That has to happen after the rest of the information comes in, the special use permit application comes in, and the subsequent public hearing. I just wanted to make sure we're all clear on how this is going.
Okay.
Yep.
And I think that Dr. Seem and I had discussed that last week.
Correct.
We just thought this would be a good venue opportunity to go through part two. And Alex can go through as much detail as you would like. And we do want to go through each one by one, and I think it would be appropriate to her, for her to let you know why it was checked yes. And again, I think she did a great job. She highlighted the one that actually puts it in that category. And then if you'd like, we can touch on the narrative as well.
Okay.
As she goes through, if you want, I don't know if we want to read verbatim all of these impacts, but what I would suggest is Alex will go through the part two, explain why we checked what we did. Maybe just give some of the highlights rather than reading it.
I think so. We're all equal to read it.
Yeah.
We should be reading it.
I would encourage, you had this for a while.
I sound as good as I used to be, but I could still.
Thank you, well, for pointing that out. We just don't, we don't want to be overbearing, but we do want to make sure that this is all for the record. It has just been pointed out. This is just kind of an intro to the seeker. Alex will go through part two, and then questions come up, please ask. Thank you.
All right, I am going to go through the first one because Mike already touched on it, the impact on land. So I move on to number two, impact on geological features, which was not collected, was not applicable for this project. The next one would be number three, impact on surface water. We checked yes for small impact because of letter B, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the better banks of any other water body. We checked that because of the wetland, also known as the drainage ditch on the western site area. And we've noted in the narrative that all applicable regulations will be followed. I noted that a D E C CD permit as well will also be included as part of this project. There's a lot of detail in the narrative of specifics. But that was the only sub-question under impact on surface water that I believe would be applicable for this project.
And just a clarification too, that is a federal wetland that is adjoining the western portion, which has different, somewhat different regulations than a state wetland. And of course, as you know, there's no 100-foot buffer zone, so they can pretty much grade or develop rate up fairly close to that area. So we don't foresee an impact.
All right, the next one is number four, impact on groundwater. This one was simply checked for a small impact because the project will include underground petroleum bulk storage tanks, which is letter S. I've noted in the narrative that per the applicant's explanation in their narrative, all applicable D E C regulations for petroleum bulk storage tanks will be followed. They will be installed in compliance with the D E C standards and regulations governing petroleum bulk storage. Therefore, there should not be any significant impact on the environment as a result of the installation of these tanks. I also noted that there will be, that stormwater runoff from the cooling areas on the site will be collected separately and treated as hotspot areas as identified by the stormwater regulations. That was all I had for impact on groundwater.
Good.
The next one, impact on flooding. This one was somewhat of a gray area. We did select yes because of letter D, the proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. According to the D E C seeker workbook, even if there is a SWIP, you still have to select it because technically there is a change in drainage pattern, even if it is being accounted for with the SWIP. So we selected small impact for that. I did note in the narrative portion that the stormwater discharges within a SWIP will be equal to or less than pre-construction discharges.
The rate of discharge.
Yeah, the rate of discharge.
Remind me, which way is the water, surface water flowing on that site? Is it flowing north?
No, generally flows to the west, right towards the, towards the wet, the wetland.
Okay.
The drainage.
Sure. I, I meant the wetlands.
Oh, it's, it's, what happens when it gets to the wetlands, it heads, it heads south and then loops back up around and goes north. It's kind of a funky pattern. It's, it's counterintuitive. You would think it would just go north. But it gets collected, actually goes under 318, out behind Bernary, then under, across 318, then back up across, or under 414, and back up across 318, and ultimately under the thruway. It's a big loop.
Sorry I asked.
That's the fun part.
That was all I had for that for question number five. The next one is impact on air, number six. We selected no for that. None of the questions were applicable to this project.
Excuse me, even with all the diesel that they're proposing and the trucks idling?
Yeah, it didn't meet any of the standards listed in the D E C workbook for this question.
Okay.
We do address owners in a different question, though.
Okay.
But that's a great question because intuitively you would think.
You would think.
But if you look.
But see, I don't, I don't know all of these, that carbon dioxide, interest.
Yeah, I think this question is geared towards more like industrial facilities. Like if you were to construct a large industrial facility that emitted these items.
All right, thank you.
Can I just add a point to the question about idling, because that's, that's a good question that comes up quite a bit with these types of projects. The D E C has very strict idling regulations that prohibit idling longer than five minutes for heavy trucks. And it's enforceable by state police, county sheriff, the D E C, environmental police. So they've already kind of thought about that issue and have addressed it through their idling regulations.
Okay, thank you.
And that is really noted in the submetal from the applicant.
Okay.
But there will be no hookups for trucks if they're standing there for a while and they need some power or something. Some truck stops actually provide hookup points.
For electricity?
For electricity, actually telephone and internet as well, but that's not this.
Is Rick still on the phone? If he's still following, he may be able to answer the question.
Rick, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. I mean, we, we have tried to do that in certain locations, but we cannot force the drivers to use it, and all of those that you're referencing are paid services. And they mostly choose not to use it. And it just occupies a lot of time. Now, you know, if the board is strong on that, we can revisit this. But our history tells us that if we put the system in, it's not going to be used for the most part.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will move on to the next question, number seven, impact on plants and animals. We checked yes with this one.
Is it bad? Answer, answer. It's great. Hello? Do we have a new caller?
Yeah, no, this is Ricky. I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button.
You're forgiven.
So we selected yes for, for. So we selected yes for, for impact on plants and animals because of sub-question B, the proposed action may result in reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare threatened or endangered species as listed by New York State or federal government. This one is explained in more detail in the narrative, but essentially the DEC MACR flagged the Indiana bat as being potentially located on the site. However, we do know that the site consists of agricultural land with no really large areas of trees that would be that habitat. I believe the applicant is looking or had put in our text to get an updated letter that this is a little more current from the DEC Natural Heritage Program. But the original letter that they submitted did say that there would be no impact on the Indiana bat population as a result of the project.
Okay.
Could I just add to that point? So we have requested an updated letter from the DEC. We got a response back saying that it could be as long as six weeks before they give us another response. I would just note for the board that our position, as well as the DEC EAF handbook position there is that we don't need to get another letter, because when you fill out the EAF form, it autofills what the potential endangered species will be, and that information comes directly from the Natural Heritage database which DEC operates. So going to get the letter is basically the same thing as just doing, completing the EAF form. And when you look at the EAF workbook, it expressly says you don't need to contact natural heritage when you fill out the EAF form, because the information from our database automatically autofills into the form. So we're going to try to get the letter, but it may not be here by the next meeting. That's my point.
Okay. And I understand the formality of the letter as opposed to the matter, and I think that location, two trees on it.
Right. And I'm happy to show you the information from the workbook, which expressly says you don't need to go to the DEC, the Natural Heritage Unit, when you fill out the EAF form.
I can confirm that. There's no reason to show the board. It's, it's in there. It's more important. You're familiar with it, you've read it before. It just so happens, I think, we're always just making sure they're covering their bases.
Well, if the letter comes fine, we're not going to let it hold up the budget.
Okay, great, appreciate that.
All right, the next question, number eight, impact on agricultural resources. We selected yes for this one because of two questions, A and D. A states the proposed action may impact soil classified in soil groups one through four of the New York State land conservation system, also known as prime agricultural land. And letter D, the proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses, either more than two and a half acres or fits in an agricultural district, which this project site is located in an agricultural district, and we are beyond the two and a half acre threshold. The narrative explains though that overall this project area represents a very small portion of the overall acreage of agricultural land within the town and the county. I have the figures listed here. I did need calculations based off a 13-acre project area, so that might change a little bit, but not, not much. 13 acres represent less than 0.2% of the overall agricultural district land within the town of Tahrir, and it represents 0.01% of the overall agricultural district listed land in the county. Therefore, we did not feel that it would have, it would represent a significant environmental impact, although we did, for letter D, we did check moderate impact simply because of the, it being beyond the two and a half acre threshold, and it, it is irreversibly converting agricultural land to commercial use. But overall, we, I kind of explained that it wouldn't have an overall significant adverse impact on the environment.
Okay.
The next one, impact on aesthetic resources. We checked yes. This was kind of just a technical, I mean, the project is technically visible from publicly accessible vantage points year round, which is letter C. And letter D, the situation or activity in which viewers engaged while viewing the proposed action is routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work. These represent really small overall impact. I've noted in the narrative that the proposed buildings are consistent with the existing nearby land uses. And as the applicant has gone into detail about these various aesthetic components to the outside of the building to make it look nice and blend in, those are detailed a little bit more in the narrative.
Alex, how does the workbook describe aesthetic resources?
So those are designated, they could be like state designated scenic byways, anything like that, but they're, they're state listed. It's not just, you know, oh, a certain area looks nice. They're all listed within the state databases, and there aren't any that I could find within the area. The next question, number 10. This one we checked yes for because of A. It's not highlighted, I just updated this yesterday, but technically there was a little bit of confusion, but we got it clarified. The McGee House located to the south of the project site is listed as an eligible property on the state Chris website, and we just wanted to make sure that SHIBO was aware of that when they issued the no effect letter for the project, which as it turns out they were. So based on the SHIBO letters that the applicant has provided, SHIBO determined that the proposed project wouldn't result in any negative environmental impact on any of the agricultural purpose.
Sorry, you're, no, no, no. Chris, you've got a door out there that's blowing all over the place. So you do have that SHIBO.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to.
It's actually, it's, they refer to it as a no impact letter, because in the body of the letter, they put in bold letters, no impact, so. But Alex and I talked through that when we talked to Mr. Frye about it, so I think they have the letter in the.
They have what they need, yeah.
Yeah. I was just surprised that they reacted that little.
Oh, actually, that was.
Was that early on?
Yeah, so record timing. We had, we had just emailed for clarification to confirm that the 2013 letter still applies for the project, and they responded within a few hours saying that specifically for our project, for the WOMP's 14-acre parcel, that it is, the letter still applies for no potential impact.
Okay, good.
So the next few questions, we selected no to. Number 11, impact on open space and recreation. The project didn't appear to, none of these sub-questions appeared to be applicable for the project based on the DEC workbook. Same for number 12. The project is not located within a critical environmental area, so we checked no for that. The next item, number 13, impact on transportation. We selected yes for this simply because if you look at letter E, technically the project, the proposed project could alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods. The traffic impact study, I did note it in the narrative, but we, we were just waiting on a final response from DOT. Do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, I think Tim had mentioned earlier that they have submitted previously, I think in April, to DOT, and they are still waiting for some formal response, but I think that at least what Tim expressed was they were looking favorably about that intersection being signaledized. We just have to get something formally in writing from them.
Sure. And what we can get is DOT to conceptually approve of a traffic signal for our access drive, but it's going to take months of permitting with DOT for the actual construction permit. So we'll try to get that conceptual approval for next month, but the formal permit from New York State DOT to construct the signal will be forthcoming at time of building permit.
Understood.
And then we can update the narrative to include that. That was all I had for the transportation question. The next one, impact on energy, number 14. We selected yes because of letter B, the proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than 50 single or two-family residences or to serve a commercial or industrial use. For this one, it was partially applicable. We explained in the narrative that the project will yes require the use of energy, and we discussed just that it will connect to electric and natural gas, but that the amount of energy utilized should be similar to the existing nearby commercial areas, convenience stores. It shouldn't be anything out of the ordinary. That was all I had for that one. The next one, number 15, impact on noise, odor, and light. I've noted that there will be, during construction, there will be temporary elevated noise levels and odor levels because of construction vehicles, that these should be temporary in nature and wouldn't, wouldn't exist once the construction is ended. So that's why I highlighted A and C. Those would be small impacts. Now, the issue of light, that is on the next page of the, letter D. The site plans did include exterior lighting, and it has been designed to comply with the town zoning law. I've detailed that a little bit more in the narrative, but it's our opinion that it does not represent a significant environmental impact.
We actually, I sent, I sent these plans to one of our electrical design engineers that does a lot of lighting, and he went through all of the cut sheets, went through all the foot candles and everything, and he, he was of the opinion that obviously it's going to be bright, but given the locale and the fixtures and the fact that it is going to be a little bit below the road, not a lot, that it is appropriate lighting for the use. So you know, we did that pretty strongly.
Was the orange sign included in the plans when you looked at it?
No. No. We just looked at the site lighting at this point.
All right. Okay. Well, we'll be dealing with that against someone separately anyhow, so.
Yes.
Okay.
That was all I had. So the remaining three questions, impact on human health, consistency with community plans, and consistency with community character. None of those were applicable for this project.
Alex, can we just go back to, to Kenner's point about the idling, the noise, odor, and that? If the board feels appropriate, we could put some narrative in there about the idling trucks, and then as Mr. Everett had indicated, that there are measures to take to enforce that. That way at least it's on the record. I don't know, does that seem appropriate to include?
I think it is. You've got two truck stops opposing each other.
Yeah.
And, you know, as far as I know, there hasn't been any complaint about petrol.
Right.
But now you're adding another equal amount.
Mm-hmm.
So.
We can at least note it.
Yes, thank you.
Sure. I think it'd be good to.
Okay. Yeah, we can have that end. Any other questions?
Anything from the board?
Nope.
Thanks, Josh.
I need your name to tell us. We did get responses to our previous comments from Moller. We will look at those. We will, if there's any questions regarding their responses, we'll work them out with Tim and Moller. If there's other areas that may be more, how do I say, non-engineering or technical, we may want to further discuss some of those with the board. I know I've brought it up twice, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it this evening, but the wide curb cut for the truck area, as you know, with this Sessler development ever does take off, and this is a primary road network in and out of the Sessler development, you are going to have some conflicts with the tractor trailers and trucks. So just, that's for one example.
I did see some comments from the applicant saying that they would modify, I guess, some of these surface painting strips and things to control the traffic a little bit better.
When we talk about radiuses and turning in and out of there, I guess if you don't mind, we'd just like to ask, is it assumed that all of the tractor trailers are going to be coming in that first stop going north and then exiting around? I mean, it's not likely, is it intended that they're all going to be coming in like a one-way?
That's right. Just with the location of the site, it's, it's a travel stop for the interstate, right? So all your vehicles are going to be exiting the interstate, coming in. We've got two lanes now. We're building a four-lane road, two lanes in both directions.
Yeah.
So that right lane is where those trucks could start slowing down and circulating into the site. So it's almost like their own dedicated right turn lane, but we are continuing it in case, you know, they do need that to enter over here.
Okay.
But it's really going to be isolated for right turns into the site here. Any trucks not, this development's not going to support, you know, truck traffic. Hopefully that's more retail restaurant development. So your trucks aren't going to be crossing those incoming traffic to left. They'll be right into the property.
So exiting.
Yeah.
You have to cross there into the other two lanes going out.
That's correct. So exiting the site, again, you're not going to have product development that supports a truck to go right.
Eventually, there may be, but.
That's right. So this access drive has been narrowed here, you know, much larger to here. We've also included some, some striping to further delineate and isolate trucks to a single ingress. So this is more concentrated for that, those trucks exiting than this area, because here's your diesel dispensers. A truck trying to get into the scale here or the diesel, our diesel dispenser, he's going to have to travel a little bit further than the truck trying to get into this diesel dispenser. He's going to have to turn a little bit sooner. But everybody exiting, they can all single file exit out into the site and then trailer drive.
I know we've covered this before, but do you have a gas line back there for vehicles towing? towing trailers?
So no, that's a corporate standard to really isolate the diesel dispensers from the passenger unleaded fueling.
Because that was one thing that we brought up last year.
That's right. So we did widen out these drives and circulation to support the trailers, both for agricultural use, and it was informed that this is really a gateway to the Finger Lakes for RVs and larger vehicles. So we do have some RV parking and we've increased some drive aisle circulation to allow for those larger vehicles to enter these fueling dispensers.
Is there enough room for tandem factor trailers to take the radius and turn if they were like hitting the scales?
Yeah, there's adequate room for circulation of the tams. But they would, I don't think they'd be getting on a scale with that, but you've got experienced drivers coming to these facilities.
There would be signage as well as striking off this.
That's correct. There's directional signage for trucks and the vehicle passengers because it's really important to isolate those two uses.
While we're on the topic of trucks, there was recently a comment I had heard, and I can't recall exactly who made that, that there would be overnight parking of trucks at the facility. And I thought earlier in our discussions, there was assurance that there would be no overnight parking. So where do you stand on that issue?
So I know there's no drop trailers, but if Rick's still on the line, he might be able to address that. Is he?
Well, I can tell you that there will be likely be overnight truck parking. Your zoning code permits that, provided that we consent to the code enforcement officer and then the binder that we sent to the board and the code enforcement officer, we provided that consent. But there will be no drop trailers because the town was concerned about, you know, people just dropping a trailer and then having the tractor leave and there will be none of that. Love doesn't allow for that.
Okay.
Yeah, and Dave, just to further clarify that, I mean, there will almost definitely be overnight parking and there will be over daytime parking. A lot of this just has to do with hours of service rules. When the truck's got to shut down, he's got to shut down or he's in violation of the law.
Fair enough. Okay. Thank you. You're done? All right. I think we'll set this aside then for the moment until we come back to it next month. But I think by that time, we'll be, if there are any questions or clarifications that need to be done on that, next month, we probably will be ready to just move ahead on the resolution. Okay, I think that covers everything that we had planned to do tonight regarding the Love's Trail Center. You're welcome to stay, but we won't hold you yet.
Can I ask the board to entertain, establish, and set in a public hearings for the July meetings to include the continuation of site plan, seeker subdivision, but also to include the anticipated special permit public hearing? It has to be set here. Why don't we set those here at this meeting? I believe you're meeting in?
The 28th.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's the 4th, pardon, Tuesday.
That's okay though, because that gives the county planning board plenty of time to marinate over the special permit application that will be forthcoming, et cetera. The county, I think the county meeting is on the 9th. It's the second Tuesday of every month, right? So the county plan was, I was trying to strategize this with the applicant to, well, the applicant can look on their website as well, talk to the county, but just for those board purposes, is there's a couple more materials that are going to make their way over, I think, to the county planning board. One of them is going to be if the town board is indeed going to adopt an amendment of the zoning law, that'll make its way over as well. So this would be for the 20, you would be entertaining a motion for those public hearings on the 28th is what you said.
Right. But typically, we refer the information to the county. We won't have that opportunity since we're not going to be meeting and we don't have a special permit in hand.
With permit, I often, when I'm doing applicant work, I often refer things myself with the municipality's permission. So if you don't have a problem with Mr. Everett's office coordinating with me to make sure the correct referrals are going over to the county, it can be done directly through the applicant.
Okay. Anybody on the board have a problem with that?
I didn't hear a whole bit.
Because the, our meeting is late in the month, we're not going to have an opportunity to look at the special permit prior to going to the San Diego County Planning Department.
Isn't that what, this thing?
For illuminated lighting.
Oh, for illuminated lighting.
Yeah, this is going to be the special permit for the sign. So we're just saying, we're giving the attorneys their right to go ahead and submit that when it's ready and not going through us first. You're good? Yeah. Okay. I think everybody's in agreement with that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, board, for your time.
Is that going to include like a sign that changes all the time? Or does that have to go through our zoning board of appeals? This is variance.
The code doesn't allow that.
Pardon?
Our code doesn't allow that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's why Del Lago has a static sign rather than a revolving or changing sign.
Okay. Just to clarify.
Well, it's also through authority.
Well, the sign that we are proposing has a gas pricer and the price of the fuel will change periodically.
Right.
Just like Petro has.
Right.
The same thing.
It's not a revolving.
It's not a revolving. It's just a digital sign in which it changes periodically.
Hopefully it goes down.
The town just doesn't permit signs where people are advertising. I think that was the intent of the zoning advisory committee in passing.
Well, you know, if I don't ask, I don't get clarification.
That was a good question.
Did we want to entertain that motion for the public hearings?
Yes. So can you phrase that, Tom?
I guess you're just entertaining a motion to set a public hearing for the Love's Trail Center, the continuation of the subdivision, site plan, seeker, public hearings, as well as conducting a public hearing on special use permit for illuminated signage. And Larry, I'll be happy to work with you on it if you need to dust off on that. Anything else that you folks are aware of with regards to public hearings? That's all I can think of at this point.
That's the only, you know, the subdivision is a continuation and we've got a change in subdivision plan, so it's, but yeah.
I think you're good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. So you've heard the motion, you understand the motion, we're just going to notice a public hearing for seeker, site plan, subdivision, and special permit.
And is that at 6:30? You would normally be set at times as well. 6:35? You are at 6:30?
We'll do it at 6:30.
6:30 and then the special permit at 6:35 or as soon thereafter as it can be conducted?
Well, now you told me we could lump these things together.
Well, the problem this time is you've already got three of them that are being continued. So you've got a new public hearing for special permit.
All right. You'll work.
If you want for cleanliness purposes.
Good point.
You're going to recopulate the notice of these?
All right. Are we ready to vote? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye to vote. So move. We may check back with you, Tom.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Brittany, you're welcome to stay on too, but I would really find it very interesting if I were you.
Well, I appreciate the offer to bow out. You had to say say. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, now we can go back to the Max and Smucker subdivision. We've had our public hearing and we do need to do some things regarding this. They have completed the short environmental assessment form and they have, at least I think I was the one that actually filled this one out. I think you have, probably no, it's a short, that's a long one, maybe. Did you get the one that said it's a single page, both sides, short environmental assessment form? Okay.
Single page, both sides.
I think I've got one, Tom, that's my guy.
I just want to remind everybody that New York State case law on subdivision said that the seeker has to be completed and a negative declaration adopted before the public hearing can be decided upon. So for future purposes, why would we worry about it a whole lot per ten years unless the applicant had a problem? But what we've got to do in the future is we've got to conduct seeker and then do the public hearing on small applications. The bigger ones, you just can't close the public hearing before seeker's neck back. So you can continue them on. Just wanted to point out there's case law on that.
Okay. Thank you for that. Now, the situation here is that it's 10 acres of land. It's mostly open farmland, as far as I can tell, and it's going to be converted to residential I asked Craig if the new owners intended to, I mean, you don't need 10 acres for a home. I wondered whether they might consider or were planning to lease it back to the original owner for farming? And he said he's fairly certain it's not going to happen. So this will be 10 acres of agricultural land that's going to be removed. And as far as seeker goes, that's the only issue we really need to deal with because it is removing what, for a large portion of that area, as far as I can tell, is prime agricultural land. And it's the same argument that was presented by Alex for the Love's project. There was 13 acres there that represents a small portion of the town, but each one kind of chips away at the prime lands and it is within an ag district, so we have to be more careful with that. But let's look through the short form, part two, and I pre-filled those as small or no or small impact, interior conflict with the land use planning or zoning, no, changing the use or intensity of land use. Again, it's small impact, as I see it. Do you agree?
Because of the 10 acre size.
The 10 acres coming out, yeah.
Is the 10 acres currently wooded?
No, it's all the field.
It's all the field.
Yeah, it's a larger field than that and the 10 acres would be cut out of the corner. Three, impair the quality, character or quality of the existing community, no. Impact on environmental characteristics that caused attachment, caused the establishment of critical environment, we don't have any critical environmental areas in the town. An adverse change in the existing level of traffic, no. Increase usage of energy, no, nothing that's significant. Will the proposed action impact existing public private water supplies, wastewater, no, there's no utilities out there. Will it impair criteria or quality of historic or archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources, no. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, no. Will the proposed action result in increased potential for erosion, flooding, drainage, no. Will it create an environmental hazard, environmental resource, human hazard, no. And I didn't complete it to put the narrative in there, but again, as I said, the narrative has to deal with the loss of agricultural land, prime land within an agricultural district. Our justification is that it represents a very small portion of the total prime land in the town, county, and I'm not sure what more you can say. I don't know if you would, if you, Alex or Mike have any suggestions on that?
We are taking more ag away, but keeping in mind it's in keeping with the zoning. It's a permissible use and it's not something that you're going to be able to quote unquote deny that, you know, but you just, it's just an acknowledgement that you're aware that you are taking that out, so.
Do you really relate to the total agriculture of the town or that property?
However, the, as a lead agency, however you want to equate it, I mean, if it's 10 acres out of 100, it's 10%. If it's 10 acres out of the whatever thousand, then it's 0.2%. So it's all relative.
We're looking at the whole. Yeah, and I think if I can draw on Alex's work, you said the 13 acres there represented, what, 0.2% of the?
Yeah, 0.2 of the town.
0.01 from the town.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's probably the same.
So that just sounds correct.
The narrative of these deals, yeah. So we do have a resolution, a draft resolution for the seeker, a standard single page on both sides. You should have that in hand. If you don't, it may be still in your mailbox and you haven't picked up that material. Yeah. And this was printed on grayscale. So it has the. I got the senior citizens copy. Does everybody have it?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is one I printed on. Mr. Blair, are we rushing too fast on this? Do you have any comments you want to make?
No, sir, I am not having much of a part of doing any of this, so I haven't had much input, but if you need input, I'm happy to jump in anytime. I think at this point, you're just completing your SEAF part two.
Yep.
And you're going to make your determination.
Yep.
And I think one of the points that you made about property, not all 10 acres will be paved either. There's a little bit of a difference between some of our commercial parcels where they're irretrievably permanently removed from the agricultural district. It's a little bit of a softer impact when a property will have portions of it retained as woodland, grassland, open area, ag potential, et cetera, than something like a big commercial project. So I think you had it right down the right path on that.
Okay.
project. So I think you had it right down the right path on that.
Alright. The resolution we have, and this is the Town of Tyre Seeker Resolution for the proposed subdivision of land by Michael and Rebecca Schmucker. I think it's pretty straightforward. We've looked at these in the past. Four, whereas is just saying what we've done up to this point. And then number five is that we carefully considered the environmental record prepared for this action. And now therefore be it resolved that the action, proposed action will or will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment. And thus a negative or positive declaration is issued. So will not and negative. And an environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Doesn't raise to the requirement to have that done. Everybody understand where we're at? Would somebody care to move? Okay. Henry Bickel moves.
I'll second.
And Karen Thompson, second. We'll do a roll call vote. Larry Kessel.
Yes.
Al Smith.
Yes.
Deborah Geary.
Yes.
Ken Howenstein.
Yes.
Karen Thompson.
Yes.
Henry Bickel.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The vote is seven to zero. Seeker has been completed. And now we can move to the next resolution. Again, in draft form. And it's a resolution on the planning board of the Town of Tyre regarding the subdivision application of Richard and Gail Banks for a minor subdivision. Clarification, Tom. We're, we're dealing with two parties here. One party being the landowner, one party being the purchaser of the subdivision. So the subdivision is actually done by the landowner.
It depends. Some people prepare their properties for later sale by going ahead and doing early subdivisions.
Okay.
But I think this is a condition to a current purchase and sale contract, is it not?
I would imagine so.
If there's an active purchase and sale contract, you're entitled to look at that if you wanted to and to have the applicant bring it in. If it's a condition to the purchase and sale contract, it's, it depends upon whose contingency it is. Oftentimes buyers will require the seller to shepherd this through the process, get it all buttoned up before they pay that purchase price.
I think in this case, it's the purchaser who's shepherding.
Correct. Yeah, it's negotiable, really is. So it depends upon what their contract.
So by whom we, we say is actually requesting this minor subdivision, it's not, it's not going to cover up the works?
No. Well, what is quite familiar with this is when a buyer doesn't yet own the property, but they're obtaining an approval from the town, so long as they have permission of the owner, they can proceed. And we have a form as our standard part of the package that where the owner gives no permission to do this. And Craig probably already received it in this one.
Yep, correct. Okay. Alright. Once again, we have some fairly standard whereas. If you look at the fourth whereas on there. Because normally this sort of thing would go to the county planning board because it is a subdivision within an ag district. And we stated in the whereas, number four, that the planning board was informed by the Senate County Department of Planning that submission of the minor subdivision applications pursuant to section 239 L and M of the General Municipal law was not necessary owing to a memorandum of understanding. And I have a date there that we have yet to actually secure between the county and the town. The county at one point was trying to reduce the sort of workload that was going to the county, the planning board. And they had established a memorandum of understanding, and I cannot find my copy of ages ago. So we're trying to tighten that up a little bit, but by at least identifying the date of that MOU. But Craig has confirmed with the county that they don't want to see it. So we'll, we'll fill that in when we get that additional bit of information. And I need a final plat date on there, the plat for the subdivision. So we have our further resolves then. Standard conditions. To that end of the final plat, as to these filed with the county clerk's office, you know, it's all, all of our standard sort of things. Are there any questions on this resolution? Any concerns?
Are you going to get all of these dates?
Yes. We'll fill those in. I mean, those are, those are hard pieces of information, you know. It's just that we didn't have enough time to put this together.
But they're already established and available.
Yes.
Okay. Just got to find them.
Are we, any questions about this? Would you, you want us to go over it a little bit in more detail, or you're happy with what we've done?
That was my only question, isn't it?
Yeah.
I feel good for both.
Would somebody care to move this resolution?
I'll move.
Al Smith, move. And Deb Geary, second. We'll do a roll call vote. Larry Kessel.
Yes.
Al Smith.
Yes.
Deborah Geary.
Yes.
Ken Howenstein.
Yes.
Karen Thompson.
Yes.
Henry Bickel.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we can move that one forward. Under other old business, I wanted to, I wanted, I'd like to add two additional things. And one is a revisit of the 3S Gateway visit here last month.
Dr. Singh.
Yes.
Alex is going to excuse herself and hit the road. That's alright.
Well, if you must. It has stopped raining here, actually. It's the same time.
Thank you.
Timeout one minute. You better enter. Hey, Alex. If you recall, last week, we had 3S Gateway here talking about the work that they're doing now on site. We had some questions about, specifically about the work they were planning. And we said at that time, we'd get a meeting together with our people and their people. And that was done. They actually provided some different information than what was shown to us on the night of the planning board meeting. And with that different information, then it became clear again, it's not an issue. So we told them to go ahead. And because there was no need for the planning board to get involved in what they were proposing. So I just wanted to let you know that that was done. And you can see the work that's going on here now.
Sure is. And the meeting is a little bigger.
A little bigger. I don't think, burk holders and other things anywhere, we had completed the seeker last month. But we still have site plan subdivision to do. And Mike, while you're here, I'm wondering if you could sort of review for us the status of their site plan subdivision? And I know you said that it's basically there, we can add, and I, well, I'll let you carry on.
Yeah, Jeff, we had been working, as you know, with Jason McCormick. There had been, over the past year plus, year and a half, I think, some matters with Jason that he needed to take care of with his client. And Jason was also trying to accommodate the comments from Mobala in the town. There was a lot of back and forth with the methodologies that he was using, particularly when it came to the stormwater. We don't really so much have a problem with the subdivision. The last iteration of comments, he was, I'm going to say he was 95%. It's just that last 5% where we're still waiting to make sure that things are buttoned up. And then it's my understanding from Craig that there may have been some additional activity out there since this whole thing started. Craig and I need to do the annual pond, or, excuse me, not annual, but every three-year pond inspections for several facilities. So we were going to wrap the burk holder site visit into that, which was going to occur this afternoon before this meeting. And of course, it's the first rain event we've had in a month, so that washed it out. But I just assured Craig that within the next week or two, I'll make a trip. He and I will visit the pond sites to make sure that they're functioning according to design. And we'll also take a drive. I'll bring the plans out to the town, see where he's at with what's going on. Double check with the design engineer, or the review engineer I had working with me at Mobala, try to get this wrapped up. There's been, again, some challenges with the applicant and his engineer. And we're trying to work through that.
Are there, should we be putting some conditions on the approval? And I've talked briefly to Craig about this, and maybe it's not appropriate for these, but I know that there, there seem to be more vehicles than what he indicated in his application.
Yep.
I don't know to what extent we need to have him address landscaping, but those sort of things, the type that we should be including as conditions on the?
I think so.
If I have our site inspection, we'll go out there.
Yep, and we'll, you know, go through the application, go through the plans, see what they're prepared.
That'd be good. And if you can relay that information to me, I can work that into, I have a draft resolution, but, you know, we'll have to tidy it up a bit.
Okay.
Okay. So again, it's a little bit more work on burk holder. We might have time in July to go back to that. Okay.
I think it's very important to document that.
Moving on to new business, we have a request for Ipanha Neighborhood Housing Services to extend their approval of the site plan subdivision for Bynuc Circle Phase 2A. And you should have a resolution in hand. That's going to be there. The cover letter from INHS as well as the resolution. We continue, and it's basically the same one we did last year, but changed the dates on it. Does anybody have concerns about that? As soon as I find it. Alright. There's just one additional whereas that talks about the fact that they weren't successful in getting funding in the 2018, 2019 funding cycle. And Joe Bo says he thinks there actually may be two funding cycles within 2020. But who knows?
Wow.
You know, yeah. All those things are going to change. Does everybody understand the resolution? Would somebody care to make a motion?
I'll move.
Al Smith, man, you're taking charge tonight.
Yep. Your old way around.
I'll second it.
And Ken Howenstein.
I think you're pretty good on the 90s.
We have a roll call vote. Larry Kessel.
Yes.
Al Smith.
Yes.
Deborah Geary.
Yes.
Ken Howenstein.
Yes.
Karen Thompson.
Yes.
Henry Bickel.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that is the rule. Alright. Under new business, I'm sorry, I don't think there's any other new business at the moment. We can go into correspondence. If you have seen the latest issue of Towns and Topics, I will point you to the article about whether you build it and they will come, or whether you plan it and they will come. I thought it was kind of an interesting article with some examples about whether both of those processes can work. That's really how you approach it. So I recommend taking a look at that. I don't think I've had any other correspondence. Larry, you get anything?
Nope.
Okay. You may then move into planning training and website.
Well, obviously, the planning board's been very busy. And thank you for your patience with the two-week interval. There is a lot of things that go on between some of us just to get other things done. And the minutes were pretty tight, but thanks. Appreciate it. Training, we have another person to knock off the air already. So there's only one whole person to go and a half a person to go for this year. They were in great shape. I will have the report out to each individual as to their status this year and kind of, we do have some activity next year, but it might be too early to, you know, I don't want to get pushed either, so. And we'll be getting back to some training, I'm certain, once we get over this situation we're looking at. And we'll be able to get a couple of things. One of my main things is going to be cleanup I used to do on the website. I want to be able to do that again. I don't know how to do it yet, and I have Mr. Senicropes' promise that he's going to make me just back to where I was before.
Yeah, it was, what, back in March when we had a session planned to do more training and then, then the sky fell.
Had understood. I mean, we've all, it's been tough, but now I'm kind of coming out of it. But we'll get back to it. Because it's a little embarrassing, there's some old things on the website. I've had some comments from a couple of folks that used to live here, and they now live out of state, and said, you know, hey, what's going on with the website? And I just said, be patient, be patient. But we're, we're ready to go into our Phase 2 chain training, I guess is the way to put it. But my own little personal thing is getting rid of something that's done yesterday the following morning, or the routines I go through and get it off the website. And I'm a little wary to do that now because I'm afraid I'll shut everything down.
That's it. Okay. Two other notes. One regarding the addition One regarding the added, one about the change to footnote or creation of footnote number eight for the bulk table commercials on West. And that has been resolved, you'll learn later. But I think the town board is going to move ahead and make that change. But they have to hold a public hearing, so that's going to be announced very shortly.
And what are the exact changes that we're looking for?
Two words were removed, I think, something like that. Craig was the original.
So you think that they're going to give us permission as the planning board to change some of the zoning requirements for parking, for signage, for setbacks?
In that specific area of parcels that are flooding to New York State thruway and are within commercial West.
So that the applicant won't have to go to variances?
Or other special.
Or special permit?
It turned out the concern was more that it feared to some that the planning board could reduce some of those requirements or they might increase them. And the fear was that increasing was...
But are we, as a board, are we ready for the next applicant to say, whoa, you're denying this, but you accepted it for these people? And then a lawsuit comes in? Well, I think we should stick with going through the proper stages and have it go to the zoning board of appeals for special use permits, the whole deal as stated in our zoning law. We get away from the liability of changing it for one up or down and then denying it for another?
No, we wouldn't have to be consistent. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, let's say we tell them that they can have a 50-foot sign so it can be seen in both directions and the thruway. The next month, we get Petro in here applying for a 50-foot sign. Then we get a Holiday Inn sign or we get a Cracker Barrel sign. Where does it end?
Is it...
Where does it end?
...the council to make the actual zoning law? That's their job, isn't it? We work with whatever they come up with.
Right, I mean, they approve it. And in this particular case, they're approving a bit of a relaxation on the regs within reason. I mean, we can't go crazy on this.
But who's to say what is within reason? It might be within reason for Hank, but maybe not for Ken or not, you know?
The planning board has to work that out among themselves. And that's a decision that the planning board makes. And if, you know, a majority of members feel that a requested relaxation of a regulation is not appropriate, then, you know, it's the planning board that does not allow it.
Because within the zoning, there's a law that says according to the master corridor plan. Well, the master corridor plan is not a law, it may suggest it. So we already have that.
Yeah.
So I say it should just follow the regular steps that we already have in place. It has worked in the past and special permits have been given and variances have been granted. I don't know of anybody that's gone to the zoning board of appeals and been denied. Have you? Has anybody?
I don't know. That's the right thing I didn't point to.
Right now, you're talking to us as if we were the town board, and we're not.
No, I'm talking to you as the planning board's wanting us now to make these decisions.
We didn't ask for this. We were asked to review it, and we did. And we sent it back. They had a problem with it, and it's at the planning board. They make the law.
One person, one person asked us to review it, as far as I know. And then they turned it down. To me, that's the end.
Besides, it's their decision to make. We can talk about it all we want. It's going to be all in the decision of the board, the town board. Really not going to be left in our hands. If they decide not to, something that should be referred back to the town.
Well, it does give us flexibility for those specific properties. And when we make a determination, you know, that's going to be fine. It doesn't necessarily, it's not going to go to the town board. It's the determination of the planning board. But then that's really what our responsibility is. I guess it's, the consideration is that this particular area, because it's really servicing the thruway, it's kind of unique even beyond the point of our commercial zone West.
Right.
There's traffic coming off the thruway and then, you know, they need to be guided to where they need to go. And sometimes there's going to be bigger signs or other sort of things that we've put in commercial zone West that maybe aren't as appropriate for those parcels adjacent to the thruway. Mr. Blair, do you want to weigh in on this all?
I would say that you board already reviewed this matter, sent it up to the town board. The town board considered it, wanted a couple of changes. The changes have now been made where they feel that they're going to adopt it. All it does is it gives this, it doesn't give this board carte blanche over anything. It gives this board to make reasonable waivers, only one reasonable, with regards to only two things, parking and signage. That's it, nothing else, no setbacks, nothing else. Just parking, just signage, those two items. And I know that because I worked on this, Craig and the supervisor worked on it. I then took it over and I worked on it. I've not shown it to any applicants. And let's be clear while we're on the public record, the town board can't change its law to benefit any singular applicant. So those of you that are thinking we're doing this for love, that's out the window. It's not for love. It's for your district. It's for the betterment of your district and the various applications you have in your C1 district. Remember, you have an IHOP, a Petro. Remember the property across from Pineview Circle? That's an eligible property for these regulations if and when that gets developed, the Cecil property. It's just those four parcels.
Across from you mean north of Pineview Circle?
North, yep. So I would say to you that really the cat's out of the bag. It's town, as Hank said, it's town board province and they're already dealing with it, so there's nothing you can do at this point. They're going to change that law. They're going to make, I can tell you right now, they're going to make sure it's changed. They're going to make sure it's happened. They've already met in committee or in caucus, and the changes have already been made. And I don't know exactly what the final changes will be. I haven't seen them yet, but I do have a call on it tomorrow. And the next go around, and you folks will see it, you'll see a revised zoning law that you have to deal with. That's how it comes back to you.
Okay.
And like I said, I don't know the final tweaks, but I understood the concerns. And I think that this planning board, as far as I know, has always been super friendly in its waiver of requirements from people who've requested. And I think that's what this is all about. Those businesses that come in, making sure they feel that you're open for business and ready to have a little bit of reasonable wiggle room on signage and parking. And don't forget, every time you give somebody, this is Karen, she makes a good point, legally, every time you give somebody a waiver for something in your resolution, make sure you're detailing the specifics. So the next person that comes in, they want the same thing. You can always point back and say, no, no, wait. This is the reason we did it here. There was a particular concern specific to this property. And I do that in my practice all over the finger lakes. Every time you grant a waiver or a variance, you tie it to very specific reasons to the property, so you're not setting up what we call precedent all over the town. And I guess that's my big thing is we just have to be diligent with our resolutions if they're going to be conducting these waivers.
And it's only adjacent to the thruway.
Do you feel a little more comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
Yeah.
Good. Good time.
Yeah. Update two, Doug Jones was appointed by the town board as our alternate member. I think I'll ask him to come to the meetings now, starting in July. And I also understand that the July meeting is now fully open to the public. We probably will not be doing any video broadcasting. It's not back to normal, but the number of people who can be in this room at any one time is, will be up to what? Is there a limit on that?
I think Alex, 25.
Yeah.
For this room? It's by the number of seats or something.
Yeah, 25. Kirk and I have 25 people in here as well.
And that's going to continue through July until we...
Well, no, when the government gets its executive orders and...
So we'll be dealing with that. I simply will encourage people to continue wearing masks. It's not a big burden, maybe a little bit hard to hear someone speaking through a mask and maybe a little bit hot underneath, but I think it's worth the effort to help people stay safe.
Totally agree.
That's all I got. Somebody care to move?
I'll move.
Eric got it again? Thank you all, we'll see you back at the 28. It's the Al Kent team.